School Board, this is Monday, March 12th, 2012. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, ma'am. In terms of the table file, as part of the presentation we're doing on proposed staffing modifications and additions, we're also going to be doing a presentation on response intervention. So, in the table file, there's a PowerPoint presentation that you'll be able to go along with in that. Really, what we'll be looking at is tying all those pieces together, the discussion of RTI, the discussion of the staffing modifications and additions, and then the next big step in terms of technology transformation. So, all of those are kind of tied together. We also have several personnel items in terms of appointments. And then I also have an item for information I'd like to just share briefly in terms of a request from Principal Joel Lear as far as getting some feedback from the board as far as enrollment in specific areas of World Language Program. And in your table file, there is some information about numbers coming forward for 2012-13, as well as enrollment longevity back from 2008-09 through 2012-13. So, you'll be able to see what's happening with enrollment in each of the languages. Also, on your table, you should have had a copy of the Northfield School of Arts and Technology PowerPoint that will also be presented as part of their presentation tonight, looking at the renewal process in the self-study.
Great. All right. If there's no objection, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? No? Okay. It looks like we are moving on to the approval of the minutes. Board members, you should have in your packets the minutes from our regular meeting, which was held on February 27th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Somewhere.
Approved by Carrie. Seconded by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the minutes? What?
I have a correction.
Oh, you do? Sorry.
That's why my...
Oh, I thought you were going for a second.
I asked an item to be tabled, and I used the wrong phrase.
Oh.
Tabled means that it will be brought up later in the meeting.
Okay.
And that wasn't our intention.
It was going to another meeting.
To another time. And just curiosity for you, if you table an item and it isn't brought up, what does that mean? The dives or flagrant?
Okay.
Based on latest information, if I got?
Okay. Robert is vibing well.
Either way, it would work for me.
Okay.
So, if they'll just change that postpone.
Postpone. So, Carrie, do you amend your motion?
I think...
Okay. So, we will go on to approval of the minutes as corrected with postponing rather than tabling. And this is for the February 27th, 2012 meeting. Minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Okay. Announcements and recognition.
Yes, several announcements this evening. First of all, for the 18th year, Northfield German students participated in the National German Exam Competition. Partying this year were 40 students in levels 2, 3, 4, and 5. And again this year, many Northfield students placed very well. Congratulations to the following students who achieved commended status by scoring at or above the 80th percentile nationwide. Include Elizabeth West, David Stenzel, and Elizabeth Cordy. Placing above the 90th percentile and advancing to the award level competition, Ryan Keegan, Jonathan Moses, and Danica Simonette. This involves writing a short essay in German and an oral interview also conducted in German. This involves... The interviews were conducted on February 25th at the College of St. Benedict. At this point, good luck to all of those students as they continue on in competition. And congratulations to all students who participated in the competition for job. Well done. Yes, you surely can.
I think it says Ryan Keegan. It's Keegan Ryan.
It's Keegan Ryan. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We also had 17 students from Northfield High School who earned trips to the DECA State Tournament. And again, DECA is the program for business education students, ran from Sunday through Tuesday, March 4th through 6th. A special congratulations goes to the following students who were finalists in their event, including Nate Donovan, Will Jorenby, who took 6th in state, Caitlin Bysick, L.A. O'Brien, and Katie Roster. Northfield High School was very well represented at the state competition. This past Friday night, the Northfield High Schools Jazz 1 and 2 groups performed at the annual swing dance at the Northfield Ballroom. And I know several board members were also in attendance, although told specifically not to dance. Okay. By their children, I believe that was. These groups get together before school to practice and conducted by music teacher Ethan Friar, who is not only a great jazz conductor, but an accomplished jazz singer as well. This year's swing dance may have broken a record for attendance, and dancers ranged in age from toddlers to grandparents. We also had the 7th and 8th grade orchestras participating in the 2012 Minnesota String Orchestra Teachers Association Middle Level Orchestra Festival at Stillwater Junior High School on Friday, February 24th. At the festival, students performed for other middle school students, listened to other middle school orchestras, participated in the clinic with a string teacher, and received a rating from two judges. Our 7th grade orchestra received an excellent and superior rating, and the 8th grade orchestra received two superior ratings. So, congratulations to our 7th and 8th grade orchestra students. Those are the announcements that I have for this night.
Anyone have anything else to add? Carrie?
Elizabeth Bailey sang with the band at the...
Yep.
Pretty cool. Yeah, it was fun to hear. She did a great job. Elizabeth Bailey sang with the jazz band. She did a wonderful job.
All right. We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion, and that is the Art Tech External Visitation Team Report.
And Ryan Cremiga is going to begin for us tonight in terms of providing you an overview and the process as well as the self-study. And then I believe he has members of the external team here tonight to share information about the external visitation report and findings.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight and for letting us go through the evaluation process and hopefully eventually another contract and hopefully a five-year contract is what we're hoping for. So, I'm going to go through a little bit of the process that we've been going through for our evaluation. And then I'll introduce a couple of our team members for our evaluation team. And they will present on the recommendations from the team and some of the things that they found through their evaluation. The renewal process for us started, really it starts through the entire contract, but pulling the information together now began in the August into the fall and then has come up until this meeting. We started off with a self-study and a narrative response to four critical questions, which are part of the Northfield application for charter school renewal. The self-study is a combination of staff and students and parents and community members bringing that information together, looking at our school program, looking at school operations, special education, all aspects of our program. The four questions in particular, is the educational program a success? Is the educational... Or is the organization effective and well-run? Is the school meeting its legal obligations? And are there strategies in place for sustaining success? So, we went through that narrative piece, and I'm going to talk about that in just in a second. Included in that, then, we do an evaluation team, and that is a team members of our choosing that we pulled in from the education community, both charter school and traditional school and higher education as well. And they came in at the end of January. And then, two weeks previous to that, we actually, we had Dr. Richardson in for a site visit as well for an entire day. So, we have a number of people able to look at our program. Is the educational program a success? So, hopefully, everybody's also got a copy. You have the PowerPoint from tonight, but also the executive summary piece as well. And I tried to talk about each of those sections, and just, I'm going to briefly go through what I highlighted in that summary. The student growth data, looking at that piece as well. MCAs are a major fact of our lives. And looking at reading, science, and mathematics, reading and science, we have amazing proficiency rates in 2011 and going forward. Mathematics is something across the state that we're all working on as well and looking to show more growth with that. We have students showing a lot of growth individually, but growth to that grade level and to that standard is an area of improvement for us. With school programming, we have an active education committee, and we're constantly looking at different structures of our program and how to make students as successful as possible. This last year, we focused on the 9th grade curriculum in particular with integrating student projects and then giving them those foundational skills and building that part, what they need to do to be successful. With school climate, we do a lot on social curriculum. And with character education, we do a, as an entire school, we do a school contract at the beginning of the year, a social contract, in which students work with staff members to collaborate and come up with, how are we going to work together? How are we going to treat each other throughout the entire school year? And that's something that's reviewed throughout the school year, but then it's something that's redone each school year. And then parental engagement, that's something where we're always looking to improve and always getting people involved. With communications, we do a number of newsletters, email communications, and then this year, we've implemented an online grading system so that parents can have that feedback and get to teachers and to students have that instant feedback as well. Is the organization effective and well-run? Again, I'm trying to follow just the executive summary, that two-page document. The, when I look at the organization, is it effective? Is it well-run? A couple of things that we look at is board governance, and we have somebody who's going to talk about our board governance tonight. But one of the major things in charter school laws, charter school board members are required to now get training in board governance, finance, and employment law from a trainer that is certified by the Department of Education. So, all of our board members have gone through that training or are in the process of going through that training if they're a new board member. Again, parent communication, that's a part of that effectiveness and how we're running and how we're communicating to our parents. That's a major component for us and something that we continually will need to improve upon, even if we communicate with every piece of information every single day. It's always an area of improvement. And then policies and procedures, that's an ongoing thing with our board. We're in the process right now of looking at a third of our policies and on every three-year Is the school meeting its legal obligations? As for reporting, we have a policy in place for the retention of records and then meeting the school reporting to the Department of Education. We are, have been on time with all of our reports, including all of our financial documents and data. And then meeting the same for our special education, both programmatic and financial reporting. We have a fund balance in place for our school, and within that fund balance policy, we've continued to show over the last three years an increase to our school fund balance and hope to continue that, especially in the current economic outlook and the holdback now down to about 36%, but still way too large. And then our school lunch program, that was mentioned in our last evaluation. Our school lunch program had been operating in the red. Over the course of the last three years of this contract, our school lunch program has operated in the black every one of those years and due in large part to our school business manager and food service coordinator. So, it's a huge success for us as we move forward. And then looking at strategies for sustaining success and improving over the next charter contract. Again, I look to that school board governance, the trainings and stuff that we will continually do for new board members as we rotate approximately three board members out every single year and three board members in. So, we have that continued training. The board structure as well has changed now into, since the last evaluation that we did, charter schools have the requirement of one teacher on the board, one community member, and one parent, and then the rest of the board can be a makeup of the remainder. Community members tend to be the area that's the hardest to find. We always have a number of parents and we have teachers that will be on the board. But that structure that was put in place by the state law has made it a little easier to make sure that we're meeting the requirements for our school board structure. Our leadership team, myself, our business manager, our administrative assistant, our social worker, the continued trainings and stuff that we will be working on. One of them I'm taking advantage of right now is with the Northfield School District doing the cognitive coaching that's going on right now. Huge, huge benefit to us that you guys offered us to join that, and it's phenomenal. And then our teaching staff, looking at sustainability and looking at what we do for teachers. With our staff development, we have been part of the QComp program. We've been a part of that since our second year. And it is an area to help us do additional staff development, and it's also an area of that we've improved upon each year of the structure of it so that we have organized staff development and we don't have random acts of staff development. And then the other thing I look at is our staff reteaming. We have a number of staff people that have been here since the first, second, and third year of our existence. Of the current nine general education staff here, we have six of them that have been here for five-plus years. So, we continue to retain that staff and that continuity and consistency. So, that was the quick, quick version. You've got the executive summary, and then Dr. Richardson also has the narrative and the binder, which is much, much larger. We also, with this process, had an evaluation team come in. And that evaluation team, we chose in five different areas. We looked at school climate, we looked at school finance, school governance, administration, special education, and school program. We asked, and these people did this voluntarily and out of the kindness of their heart to come in, so we thank them very, very much. Dana Gross is a professor of psychology at the St. Olaf College, and she came in and looked at our school program and our school climate, sorry, looked at our school climate. Keith Johnson is a school finance officer for four other Minnesota charter schools, and he came in and looked at our school finances, at our audits over the last three years and even further into the past. Caroline Jones, previously the director at Prairie Creek Community School and educator for 30-plus years, looked at our school administration and board governance and looking at charter schools in particular, board governance. We had Dr. Carol Knicker come in and look at special education. She's a professor for Bemidji State. And then we had Dr. Celia Smith come in, who's been educator in middle school, high school, worked at technical college, community colleges, four-year colleges. She came in and looked at our school program. So, we have two of those people here tonight. The first person who's going to talk is Celia Smith, and she's going to look at the school program piece, but she's also going to present for Dana Gross, the school climate. And they're going to look at some of the things that they saw in their evaluation over three days and then also give you the recommendations that they have from their report. And then Caroline Jones is going to present on school administration, and she's going to present for Keith Johnson also his finance recommendations and Carol Knicker's special ed recommendations. And this is Celia Smith.
Good evening. I was charged with the curriculum, and curriculum usually is, it is the content and it is the skills that are taught. What makes it a little more complicated with a charter school, particularly Art Tech, is that the integral part of the curriculum is also getting to know the students and having that one-on-one relationship. So, as much as I couldn't just bump my way into two people talking, I was able to talk to students and staff and parents alike to see how well that was going on. And, you know, I like to say overall, I think a lot of good things are happening. I think they're trying really hard to cover as much content as they can, particularly they're aware of the state standards. And, you know, the state standards are a little ridiculous in that nobody could really cover them all. I don't know if you know that, but it would be impossible for this high school, any high school, to really master those. You've got an introduction stage. When you introduce something, you've got a practice stage and you've got a mastery. And what I would hope Art Tech will do is to try to identify when they do those things. I think they have, I think they're doing a lot of really wonderful things, but I don't know that they know when they're doing it. They need a sculpting sequence, particularly of all the skills that they are covering. They know what they're doing, but they don't necessarily know which skills and when they're being introduced. So, that was one of the areas that I thought, you know, they needed to take it to a higher level. And overall, they're doing well. I just think they need, they need a little more rigor. And when Dana Gross looked at the climate as well, she found that people were, that parents were concerned. They didn't know. When asked, are you thrilled with, are you confident that the school's going to prepare students for college? There were some, not all, but there were some who were a little reticent about that, and they kept saying rigor. And a lot of times, I think even teachers don't know what is rigor. Rigor isn't more. Rigor is, rigor is something harder. And that's why, I don't need to jump around a little on random, but my first recommendation really was to, what's this? Or my second one is maybe, sort of goes with my second one with the rubric. They don't really have a true rubric. They have a checklist. And if students had a true rubric, and I think I attached just a page out of Charlotte Daniels' took it off my top shelf, dusted it off, and there was a copy of it, so they understood exactly what is meant by a one, two, three, or four, they will be in a better position to know, oh, what that is, particularly for the, all of the individual projects that they do. It's one thing to have that in the classroom, and I think the junior high really does that quite well. But I think, I worry about exactly how that happens in the projects. And since it is a project-based school, that's something, that's something that could be really fixed by the end of the week, you know, pretty easily. And I think that in itself would raise the rigor. Both Dana and I felt that, you know, that the climate was really good. Kids love going there. Their parents said they're so thrilled. The kids get up, you know, they don't ever want to miss. They can't wait to go to school. I mean, you know, it doesn't get any better than that. You know, it's great. And kids aren't, kids will get bored if they're just sitting around. So, they're excited to go because they are indeed learning something. When you ask them individually, they will, I mean, I had lectures on Adams and the NC River, and, you know, I mean, they really get involved in what they're doing. They really like it. They feel very safe with one another, accepted, which is, you know, more than tolerance at maybe a bigger school. Acceptance is another level, and I just really commend them for that. I know that's because it's a small school and there's an advisory and that kind of thing. The, I'm sort of jumping ahead to Dana's too because they go together so intimately in this school. You know, she felt that one of her concerns was the perception of some of the students, some of the staff, and some of the parents of the school. Do people think it's for rejects? You know, are, how do you get the word out there that there's, that there's really a lot of rigor and excitement for learning? And I'm not sure what, I'm sure you'll get to what her solution was to that, but I guess I felt the same. I felt that, let's see, it's hers. Yes, and she talked about QComp too. But I think one of the things she talked about is, is the staff and how they communicate with one another. And I felt the same way, and we were both the same. Considering it's a small school, they don't really communicate as, as much as you think they would, being so close to each other. You know, it's hard in any school, but I think the beauty of a small school like this is that they're not islands, that they do work together, not just on their curriculum, but, you know, on students and all kinds of things. And they want very much to be a part of this high school and to know what students are, what teachers are doing here and elsewhere. And so, both Dana and I recommended that they, at any cost, I guess, try to get out, and if not just in this district, it's other districts, to see what wonderful things are going on. There are wonderful things going on all over the state, exciting things that I think they can learn and feel they're on the pulse of. And one of the things that we both were a little concerned about was the technology piece. And for me, even the art. You know, when I came in, I thought, wow, I couldn't wait, you know? This curriculum's going to be just dripping with arts and technology. And, you know, and it wasn't. And even if that wasn't part of the title, it needs to be. The technology needs, you know, and the teachers need training in technology so they can introduce all kinds of different things besides PowerPoint and whatnot. So, that was something that we both felt, you know, students needed, teachers needed to get out as well and communicate with one another. I think that kind of, I don't want to do hers justice. Is this all hers? Let's go back to mine a little. The other things that I had listed there, self-technology, was the PE curriculum, which is a little hazard. But I, you know, if teachers had time to talk, they would, they would solve these problems pretty easily. They would overlap, you know, they would, they would be able to, if they had a grid of the spoken sequence, they'd be able to sort of check off exactly when they've introduced some FIAID piece, a technology piece. I just think it would make their lives easier as opposed to just some, I think they're hitting it, but it's, it's a kind of a crapshoot to know really if somebody came in the 7th grade, what are all the things that they have really mastered. I think that might, I mean, and there are other things there, but trade in space, there are other sort of smaller, smaller things that we, that were on the recommendation. Do you have questions at all?
We'll do more questions.
Oh, okay.
And now we have Caroline Jones, who's going to speak on the other three sections.
Good evening, Dr. Richardson and the school board. It's nice to be back again. You all. I was very happy to be part of the Art Tech evaluation, and as Ryan said, I looked at governance and administration. And I particularly looked at how the school was progressing on its strategic planning. And I was also interested in looking at the board evaluation of the director. And it's interesting, when I met with board members, those were two of the things that they said they were concerned about. So, we were on the right track even before we met, which was really good. In my visit to the school, I spent extensive time with Ryan. I also met with four board members, and I had another conversation with Tammy, the board chair, at another time. I sat in on a teacher's staff meeting when they were discussing QComp and how to put together syllabus for the, syllabus for their areas of expertise, which was very interesting. And actually, I learned a lot that day too. And I also had the pleasure of speaking with nine students from the school, four from the high school, and five from the middle school. I want to congratulate Art Tech on its very fine governance model. I was very impressed as I talked with the board and listened to what they had to say. They worked collaboratively and well-together without the angst that sometimes exists in some school boards, which was really nice. And they talked about coming to decisions fairly easily and fairly quickly, which is also very effective. I was also on the team that evaluated them the last time that they were up for evaluation. And one of my recommendations on that occasion was that the school look really seriously at strategic planning. So, of course, that was the first question I asked. And, and they told me of the process that they had gone through since then. And while I wouldn't necessarily consider it strategic... then. And while I wouldn't necessarily consider it strategic planning, it was good work, very good work. And it was very formative work for the school. So what they did was they, they met in a strategic planning sort of way with some outside help. And they put together a number of committees for the board that really, really was formative for the board and got the board working extremely well. So I think what you see now is a school that's really found its identity, it's strong, and it knows what it's doing, and it knows who it is. And the board is working really well in that direction. But I did talk with them about strategic planning and said, now, this is what strategic planning is. And, and I think that they caught the spark. So I think that's one of the things they're going to be doing in the next few years, is thinking five, 10 years out. What kind of school do we want to be in 10 years? What do we want to look like? And then what are the steps to get there? Very, very important work for a board. The other thing that I talked with them about was supporting their director, and this kind of spills over into administration. And especially since Ryan is new, and I think Ryan is uniquely fitted to be the director of Art Tech. One of the things I did in my evaluation was, I read the minutes of the school from the day it opened until the current day. So I've read them all. And, and I also read their policy book completely. And it's interesting, Ryan's name is all over those early years at the school. So he has this history with the school, which is so incredibly valuable. He really understands the mission of the school, and he really understands what the school is about. What a valuable thing to have. So the next step for the board is to really support that new director, in terms of his professional development and just his day-to-day working in the school. And I think that they really understand that's an important thing to do. And along with that, I suggested that they seriously consider putting in place a very solid evaluation process for the director. It should be in writing, and it should be really clear. All the expectations should be very clear from Ryan's goal setting at the beginning of the year to the evaluation of those goals and whether they were or were not made, met. And, and as I've spoken with Ryan, he, he plays a big part in this, too. And I, and I hope that they can put together a process that will really show him how supportive they are and also give him guidance and leadership, you know, for his going forward. So those are my main recommendations for them. So, yeah, I think the other thing we talked about was putting together a development committee. This is more unusual in charter schools, but it's really important, especially when you have such big holdbacks. And it's important that you find alternative funds for your school and, and to figure out where those would come from. Because what we tend to do in charter schools is we tend to keep putting our hands in the same pockets. And after a while, we find they're empty. So it's really good to look for alternative funds. So that would be mine, Ryan. So shall we do Carol's now? Keith, okay. Let me just find this. I'm well acquainted with this report because I helped to edit it, so I'll see to find my place. So Keith Johnson's policy, financial management, the food service program, and staff compensation. You've already heard the good news about the food service program, so I won't reiterate that. The board has very good oversight in the school regarding finances. One of the things that's happened in the last few years at Art Tech is the establishment of a finance committee, which I think has staff members on it, parents and board members. Right. So comprehensive group of people that meet, and they meet monthly, and they review all the finances. This is a really good thing because everybody knows what's going on and everybody's on the same page. And when decisions have to be made, they usually don't come as a big shock because everybody knows what's going on. Very smart and very wise. The other thing that Art Tech has done that they really should be commended for is that they developed a fund balance policy. And they've gone from not having a fund balance to a growing fund balance, which is wonderful news for them. And they, they've set goals for what it should be in a few years' time, and it looks like they're well on the way to meeting that. The other thing that came up in Keith's review was, of course, the whole issue of staff compensation. And we all know that that's just always a big issue, especially around the issue of benefits. So Keith is suggesting that the school look at increasing the range of employee benefits and, you know, giving them different and creative ways to do this. And another, one of his recommendations is that, that they're, and I remember this the last time we did the evaluation here, too, that there seems to be a shortage of funds for technology. I remember, you know, you look at all those computers and you think, what happens when they need to be replaced? So that's just a recurring theme for Art Tech. So that's a, part of your development committee could really work on that. So. And then Keith also suggested that the, the board develop a long-range budget, which is a very wise thing to do, too, particularly in these days of holdbacks, and continue discussions on fair and sustainable compensation models. Okay. So look lastly at special ed, and Carol Knicker was the, was the evaluator here. And Carol looked at, she, she spent a couple of days in the school, and she looked at the whole area of special education. She also looked at professional development, the model of services, assistive technology, transition services, and communication. And much in keeping with what Celia had to say, Carol talked a little bit about the need for more communication, particularly between special ed staff and general ed staff. And one of the areas that's challenging for Art Tech is their model is services are provided in the classroom, much like at Prairie Creek. And so instead of it being a pull-out, one-on-one situation, you have your special ed staff going into the classroom and working alongside general education teachers. And it's a marvelous model, but it also has its challenges, and communication is one of them. So that's a little more, some more training for general ed and special ed staff on how to, how to, you know, make that work seamlessly in classrooms would be really good. She also suggested that the school look seriously at getting a menu of assistive technology devices. And I know that you probably have federal, federal funds that you can use for this. And this would be really good because this really enhances the learning of the special needs students in the classroom. So a wonderful thing to do, and I think it's a great recommendation. Then the other thing that she talked about was providing transition services. So this, this involves students leaving Art Tech and going on to wherever they're going. Having a good strategy in place for how those, those children transition from Art Tech to their next spot. And then she, on the whole area of communication, she talked a little bit about, as the special education team gets together and meets regularly to discuss the various things it needs to discuss, she suggested that this meeting have an agenda, that it be really clear and cooperatively written by the team. So it's less, let's just get together and chat, and it's more, we have business to do, and let's have a structure for this. And I think that that, that covers all of that. And so I just want to say in closing that it would be my recommendation to the board that you renew your contract with Art Tech for the next five years. Thank you for your time.
We went a little bit over, I think, on our estimated time. But it's now open for questions that anybody may have, or for either me or Celia or Caroline.
Thank you, Ryan. I really appreciate what an honest and balanced perspective that your team gave.
We were very thrilled with the, the five people that came together for this report. Very much gave us a lot of feedback and a number of things that we've already started to discuss and things that we want to improve upon.
Julie?
I just had two comments I wanted to commend, Ryan, for your number of positive comments about yourself and how you really stepped up and you just came on board in July and have done such an amazing job. And it's highlighted often in the report, so I wanted to commend you on that. And then, secondly, to congratulate you on the fund balance. That is incredibly wonderful, that in 2008, you had $11,000, and now you have $96,000 fund balance. And that is huge. And it obviously recommend, represents a true commitment by everyone, you know, on staff to really be able to build that fund balance. It's truly remarkable. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Other questions are coming?
Carrie? I, again, you know, have sat through a number of these evaluations on this and other charter schools. And I just, just really to echo what Ellen said, but I really appreciate the rigor of the external evaluation and the specificity of the recommendations. It's, I feel like we're in a, kind of a new era in our relationships with charter schools, where we can have this very candid discussion of strengths and areas to improve. And it's something we work on very hard in our, our district schools, to be very candid about areas of growth. And I just really commend the external team for the rigor of evaluation. And I commend you for the, the work that you're doing to implement those recommendations. It's exciting to see.
Yeah, we're very, we're very excited to, to have evaluated ourselves, both that self, self-evaluation process, but then having an evaluation team come in. We also got a lot of feedback from Dr. Richardson as well, when he was there for the entire day. And it's a lot of information to take in, but it's good information. It's good recommendations. It's very, very helpful for us.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Other questions are coming?
I just had, wanted to comment on, when I was reading the report, the, the sense of belonging the students talked about. And I think that's huge, and that really puts them in the right stage for learning. And then the challenge of parents saying that they didn't feel that their students might be ready for the steps beyond Art Tech. And I thought, well, that's a, a tough decision to be in as a parent, because if your student loves to go to school, they feel like they belong. And then, so I just, I think it's great that you have these plans in place to, to take on some of these academic challenges. Because I think if they're in that positive belonging stage, they're ready. And I think, you know, great things can really happen. So.
Thank you. I think Celia really, really nailed it for us as well, is that documentation piece of documenting those pieces and being able to, to show that to people as well, I think, parents as well, so that they see this is, these are the things that we are doing. These are how your child is being prepared for college, to your school, for your school, apprenticeship, whatever it might be. But we're to that place in growth and evolution that we are putting those documents into place so that you can market yourself.
Oh, Anne?
I would just like to ask the question of where you're going with this idea of renaming yourself. And, and maybe just explain the trajectory on that process.
Sure, sure. We are in the process right now of collecting information, more than anything, some name ideas. When we started the school year this year, we, we've always, you know, the Northfield School of Arts and Technology is, is a mouthful for a name. And we love the arts and we love to do technology, but from a perception, it's always been very, are you an arts conservatory? We're not an arts conservatory. That was never really a thought process in, in our stages. They see the tech part of Art Tech. And I've gotten phone calls from people wondering if we were a technical college of some sort or some sort of technical program. And that's not who we are either. So the conversation very much started this fall with, what name would better reflect us to the community and better reflect what we do. And so much of what we do is the fact that we are small and want to stay small, and that community building piece. And so that really started the process. We sat down with parents and teachers and students and community members all together, and we started off by just saying, what are adjectives that describe Art Tech? And we, we got, you know, tons of adjectives, and both in that meeting and then also we did an online survey. And we've compiled that together, and now we're, we're asking people for a name ideas, which is turning out to be much harder than people thought it would be.
Thanks.
You bet.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might just share kind of the next steps in the process. Ryan and I have talked about this a little bit. But what I'll do now is, again, take Ryan's notebook, as well as the materials that have been provided tonight. I will basically complete an evaluation of the program from the district's perspective as an authorizer. The key next step, because I strongly agree with what you heard tonight in terms of the fact that I believe this is a charter school that definitely is worth reauthorizing and moving forward. And I guess what I've been most pleased with in, in my visit and in talking with Ryan and others is the efforts and ability to, to understand that in a, in a program that has originally focused on project-based learning, that there, there is now the understanding that there also needs to be a set of core instructional components. And I think as you build the rigor of having that scope and sequence, putting those pieces together, I think it'll, it'll make the project-based piece even stronger because it will then become kind of the capstones of the various kinds of, of core academic programming that you're doing. What we'll do then is that Ryan and I will be sitting down in the, over the course of the next month, we will be hammering out the contract. The contract, just like everything else now that's coming from the state, along with the authorizer process, has become much more scrutinized. Last year, when we did Prairie Creek's piece, I sent the contract in and I waited and waited and waited. And I finally called them back and I said, did you ever get this? Oh, yes. I said, are you going to give us any idea if this is okay or not? Well, you sent it in, didn't you? And that was kind of the extent of it. And, you know, in talking with them at all, they said, yes, you know, they're, they're approved and they're moving forward on a five-year contract. Now we have an attorney, Tammy Poust, who is part of the charter team at MDE. And we have been told very clearly that they will go through the contract with a fine-tooth comb. They are going to make sure that every element of the contract is in place, that all the things that need to be there are there, and that if there are any places where we refer to something else in the contract, or something else may have occurred, even if it occurred six or seven years ago, when, when we were first working together, all of that needs to be incorporated and built into the contract document. So that may take a little bit of time to get that ready to go, but what our hope is to be ready, probably the first meeting April, to have the board formally approve a contract, so we can get it to the department. And then if they have fixes and changes to make, like they seem to have on everything else that we've sent into them over the course of the last year. So that will give us time to get that fixed and ready to go and in place before June 30th. Because, again, I, I would definitely reinforce what you heard from your, the external visitation team tonight and from Ryan. I think they have a very solid program that's moving forward. And I would reiterate the, the quality of the, both the self-study and the external visitation in terms of its openness, honestness. You showed us the, the great things you showed us, the boards. And I, I think that's, that's a really positive piece and puts you in a good place to continue to grow. So thank you very much for inviting me out to be, be a part of the, of the school for the day and also for putting all these pieces together. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for being our authorizer.
All right. We are on to the proposed 2012, 2013 debt service budget. Stephanie's going to walk us through that.
Good evening. Tonight's presentation is the first in a series of budget summaries that I'll be bringing before you over the next several weeks, leading up to the final budget document that will be presented to you in June, so that we can have a, an approved budget by our statutory required timeline of June 30th. Tonight's presentation is on the debt service fund. And let me get started here. The debt service fund is the largest non-operating fund for the district in our category of accounts. Within this category of accounts, we track all of the revenues, the sources and uses of dollars that come in and go out to pay for long-term debt issued by the district. These, the funds that come into the district to pay for this debt come in two different ways. They're either directly as tax assistance against property taxpayers, and all of those that we have have been voter approved. The, the alternative way to receive funds, if the district issues debt that's not voter-approved, what happens is we see a reduction in our state formula capital revenue to pay for that debt. We have a couple of those outstanding that I'll show you in a moment here. This is a fairly large segment of our budget. It's roughly 11% of the grand total dollars that Northfield Public Schools pay or operates with each and every given year, that, which is approximately $49 million in total. Debt service represents about 11% of that grand total amount. In this slide here, I gave you a separate sheet within your board package, so it's a little easier to see. Yes. This represents all of our outstanding debt. And for all of these rows, with the exception of the fourth and the sixth, I've, I've put an asterisk by them, all of these represent voter-approved debt issues. The top one, I, I have the top and the bottom one kind of grayed out there. And that, you may recall- And that, you may recall, I was before you back in November, requesting authorization to issue a refunding. You'll note on that top line, in March 1st of 2003, there was debt in the amount of 12.6 million issued for projects at the middle school, high school, and Memorial Field. And each bond issue is a series of several small bond issues, so there's always a range of interest rate that we pay back. That particular range of interest that we had on that debt was from 2.5% to 4.6%. When we came before you back in November, we were able to issue refunding bonds, represented on the bottom there. And I see now that I have left the percentage off. I apologize for that. But that issue, we were able to get down between 2% and 2.4%. So we recognized significant savings by refunding that issue. And that is a direct impact to taxpayers, reducing future tax levies that we need to assess in order to pay for our debt. And then all of the other issues and rows in between there, I just wanted to provide you for information, to show you what issues are still outstanding, what was the original intent when those were issued by that brief purpose statement there in the center, and what the principal and interest payments for next year will be. And throughout the budget summaries that I present to you over the next several weeks, I'll follow the same format in providing you a revenue summary, followed by an expenditure summary, and lastly, how that translates into final bottom-line numbers with fund balance. And so just to kind of explain how that looks. In the revenue summary, my first column there for the 10-11 actual, those are actually audited numbers that were presented to you back in November from Larson Allen, our independent audit firm, and their final numbers. The middle column there is the current budget that we're operating in right now throughout this year. And then the proposed budget is what we'll be compiling over all of the summaries that we bring before you, provided nothing changes or there's more dialogue or questions that might adjust those. That is what will be included in the budget that will be proposed to you in early June for adoption. So with that said, with our revenue summary, the vast majority of the debt services, I said, is from local property tax levies. And you'll note here that in the current year's budget, we have roughly $5.4 million in local property taxes for the proposed 2012-13 that is represented at 5.7. Now you'll note, I just talked about the savings that we'll be incurring. When we reissue, or when we refunded that debt, we won't be able to pay off that old debt for about 18 months down the road. So we still have that that we're paying. The new bonds are held in escrow. And so that's why we're not seeing the dip right away. It'll be a year after or out, so I just wanted, in case there was some confusion there. Interest on investments, you'll notice that in 2010-11, we had $152,000, and we're seeing a drop budgeted this year as well as next year. That's a reflection of not having a full year's worth of that money held in escrow. Because as it's held in escrow and we're waiting to pay off the old debt, we're gaining interest. So as we look at 2013, we may want to come back and amend that once we get final numbers on what the interest will be. The bottom line for the state of Minnesota are really credits that we receive from the state of Minnesota to offset property taxes, homestead market credit, and those other various credits. So we're proposing that we would be receiving approximately $6.1 million in revenue for the 2013 year. Our expenditures are used to pay the bond principal and interest payments that are reflected in the grid a few slides back that we just looked at. Along with other, the other debt service fees are for our financial advisors as they assist us in monitoring our refunding opportunities out there. This year, in the 2011-12 budget year, you'll see on the bottom row there for other uses, that is the refunding that we paid off from the previous. Last year, we looked at that, similar to our new refunding. That's when all those dollars came out of the escrow and paid off the old debt from 2001. Now as we move forward, we'll have that new one taking place for the 2003 refunding. And lastly, how that translates into the financial summary, the fund balance summary. Provided there's no refundings taking place, and we'll be adjusting this as we get into 2013, it's staying, our fund balance stays fairly constant at just over a million dollars. And again, it can, when our overall expenditures dramatically increase in any given year, if somebody's looking at the grand total of what Northfield Public Schools spends, if there's a dramatic increase in revenue or expenditures, it's usually always a result of something happening in the debt service fund in terms of a refunding. Fairly short budget presentation to start with, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any that I can.
Board members, any questions or comments? Carrie?
You know, I say it every time, but I really appreciate that you bring these budgets to us bit by bit, so we're not trying to absorb them all in that last moment. Thank you. Stephanie, in the expenditure summary, the other debt service fees, the proposed 12-13, you know, seems to be a bit of a jump from the previous year there. And maybe I just missed that in your explanation, but why is that higher than?
Oh, going from the $6,500 to the...
To the $10,000.
To the $10,000. We are looking towards this fall of potentially revising that refunding. We did a partial refunding on the 2003 issue. And so we'll be working with our financial advisors to go through that refunding. Now, we may still be bringing an amendment to you for the 11-12, now that we have some final numbers and we completed the refunding. So we do need to look at potentially refu, or, excuse me, amending the 11-12 budget, so it will be more in line with what we're projecting for next year's costs. These costs, the $6,500, were a projection from early last year, and not knowing what those financial advisor costs would be.
Okay. And then the 10-11 actual, that's lower because there wasn't a refunding going on then, so we didn't have a refund.
Right. The last refunding was done in the 9-10 fiscal year, and I believe it was January that that sale took place.
Yes, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Stephanie. I really appreciate, as Carrie said, the small bits. And it's also nice to know that the refunding that we anticipated is working out just like we planned.
Yes.
It'll be nice for the community as well.
Thank you.
All right. We now have the presentation of proposed staffing modifications and additions. And board members, in your table file, there is a presentation that Dr. Gary Lewis is going to be giving us.
Well, Gary's firing things up. Again, what we'd like to do tonight is really do three pieces in these next couple of presentations. Again, we talked last time about the idea that we've continued down a road over the last seven or eight years of moving toward a continuous improvement process. And that that continuous improvement process over that time has included significant increases in how we look at data and use data to make decisions. It's included professional learning communities as being a structure for providing collaboration with staff. It's included development of SMART goals and development of essential learnings and other pieces that would help us be prepared to really take a look at how well kids are achieving and to determine when kids may be struggling. The, kind of the capstone of that particular piece, and the thing that will drive us, I think, moving forward, will be that we would like to be able to implement as a final component of this, the concept of response intervention. And what we felt would be good tonight, although it's going to be a little long, but Gary is rehearsed and ready to go, is to really give you a solid understanding of what RTI is all about, why it is so important as kind of the element that kind of pulls things together. And really to help us take a look at how we address the question that's part of the professional learning process, which is, what do you do when kids aren't learning, and how do you address that? Once Gary has presented the information on RTI, we'd like to be able to give you an opportunity to ask questions about that. And then we'll move to talking about the modifications and staffing we're looking at. And then we'll talk about the last piece of this, which is the technology transformation piece. And Matt's going to be able to give you a teaser about the things we're going to be seeing over the next month or so as we begin talking about looking at technology and transforming the way we use technology to help kids learn. So Gary, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you. A couple of caveats before we begin. Throughout this presentation, you're going to see various terms that are in blue type. The reason that they're in blue type is that these are terms that we have defined. And as we go down the path, we will be distributing those definitions that we've agreed to operate from a school district. Secondly, this presentation is about implementing RTI at the elementary level. Trying to implement RTI K-12 is just too big a chunk to take a bite out of at one point in time. So please understand, we're talking primarily here about elementary as we go along. So what's all the fuss about? I mean, for years, Northfield Public Schools has felt really good about what we do, because we score above state and national averages on pretty much everything. But of course, no child left behind came along, and there's nobody in this district probably more critical about that than I am, given that it seems to have an adverse effect on our English language learners and special ed students. But it did cause us to disaggregate data and take a look at what's happening to all of our students. And what we found is that some of our students are not doing as well as we would hope. They're falling through the cracks. So the question becomes, how do we repair those cracks in our system? Now, our current way of doing business contributes to this problem in two ways. The first is that when serious learning and behavior problems arise, we tend to use a shotgun approach. We throw interventions out there, we shoot them at the problem, and we hope that one is going to hit. Now, there's two problems with that. Number one, when you have a shotgun kind of approach, you may or may not hit the center of the target that is your problem. And secondly, each one of those little shells is really tiny, and it might not be sufficient to really address the issue or the problem that we have. What we need instead is a more focused approach, where we're zeroing in with a scope and really trying to hit the center of that problem, being much more efficient in what we're doing. The second is that when classroom interventions are unsuccessful in solving a problem, our only recourse has often been to refer to special education. Now, the problem, of course, is that we often test some of these students, and they don't qualify for special education. They may be a slow learner, or we have the phenomenon that qualify for some special ed services. The difference between their measured intellectual potential and achievement has to be of a certain size in order to qualify. When we test them very young, that achievement gap is relatively small. We wait over time, that achievement gap increases, then they qualify for special education. Now, the problem with that is, solving a problem when it's this size is a lot easier than solving an achievement gap when it grows to that proportion. Now, there's actually a term for that that's been coined across the United States, and it's called "wait to fail." So what we need to do is when a student doesn't meet the special ed criteria, they end up falling between that crack. What we need to do is create a system that fills that gap. So, why are we talking about PLCs and RTI? Well, our goal is clearly to improve student performance, both academically and behaviorally. And we know that we make better decisions about educating our students when we use data to guide our decision-making process. We work together as a team. And we're given time each week to look at the data and to problem-solve. Now, at their core, PLCs and RTI both center about data-driven decision-making. We're using data to guide our decisions, rather than sort of shooting blindly at that target. PLCs utilize database decision-making to answer the four big questions, which you've probably seen. What knowledge or skills do we expect our students to learn? How will we know if our students have learned the expected outcomes? How will we respond when our students have already learned those outcomes? And then we've got the fourth question. How will we respond when our students have difficulty learning the expected outcomes? This is where RTI comes in. PLCs have various tools available to address these learning problems. For example, they have differentiation. They use clustering, flexible grouping, using level books. They use instructional strategies such as cooperative learning, learning centers, reading workshops, those kinds of things. We have student supports, and I have to tell you, we have more student supports here at any district that I've ever worked in in my life, in terms of volunteers and two colleges that provide us incredible amounts of support. And classroom accommodations, whether that be structured through a Section 504 plan or teachers just doing good things for kids. But when that isn't enough, and the students are still having academic or behavior problems, how will we respond when some of our students still aren't learning the expected outcomes? RTI is the next logical step. It's not a new program. It's an evolution of what we're already doing. It fills that instructional gap between regular and special ed, and it gives us new set of tools that allow us to target the problems that students encounter. Why now? Well, RTI provides us tools to work smarter, not harder. It increases the effectiveness of what we already do. We're not seeking to put more things on the plate. We're seeking to do what we do better. And we can continue to wait for the achievement gap to grow, to widen, until students qualify for special education. Or we can identify students who are at risk earlier, provide targeted instruction to accelerate learning to begin closing that achievement gap before it becomes wide. We can continue to spend time conducting pre-referral interventions and hope they work. Or we can spend the same amount of time and energy on targeted interventions that have a high probability of solving the problem. We can continue to have student services staff spend their time testing and documenting the existence of learning and behavior problems that teachers already know the kids have. Or we can refocus their efforts toward early identification and intervention before those learning and behavior problems become severe. Basically, we can continue to do what we've always done and get the same results we've always gotten. Or we can change how we do business and realize the same academic and behavior gains other districts that have implemented RTI have achieved. So what is RTI? It's a system to provide early systematic interventions to students with learning and behavior problems, and it's often typified as the triangle with three separate areas. It seeks to prevent school failure by identifying problems early, targeting those problems with research-based interventions, by monitoring progress frequently to make sure our interventions are on target and working. And it provides a multi-tiered structure of increasingly intensive services. And that yellow represents the tier two that fills that achievement gap. Now, tier one is the general ed curriculum in which we have embedded the state standards. And I have to tell you, we've been working on that, and we have got that down solid. Our people have done a marvelous job of creating that core curriculum. It meets the needs of about 80% of the students. And if we're not meeting the needs of about 80% of our students at that point, then we have to take a look at how effective our core curriculum is. a look at how effective our core curriculum is. Teachers within PLCs utilize universal screening, formative assessment, and summative assessment data, and use database decision-making to guide the development, implementation, and evaluation of their instruction. Again, teachers have these tools at their disposal to address learners' needs. But when these efforts are unsuccessful in resolving academic and behavior problems, that's where we kick in, the RTI problem-solving approach that's used to develop and implement targeted interventions. Now, tier two is small group targeted instruction that supplements the core curriculum for those students who are at risk of not reaching the grade-level standards. This is still regular education, but it's regular education on steroids, if you will. It's designed to serve about ten to fifteen percent of our student population, and these are students who require more intensive instruction or interventions than can be provided in tier one, the slow learner, the student who requires more individualized instruction than that teacher can provide who's got twenty-six other students in their classroom, but a student who does not need a tier-three special ed or ESL, that kind of services, just needs that extra boost to overcome the learning problems that they're having at the time. It is also designed for students who score out or below the cut point on universal screenings. We're going to screen every child elementary, beginning, middle, and end of the year. And through that screening, we're going to be able to predict, eventually as we have our data and we start really understanding it, that this student with this kind of a score is at risk of not being able to pass the tests this year, next year, or a couple years down the line. And when we can have that kind of data that gives us that kind of prediction, those kids are automatically going to get that sort of extra dose or regular ed on steroids, if you will. Now, it's designed to accelerate learning in order to begin closing that achievement Progress will be assessed bi-weekly. We want to know if it's working. We want to know if we're putting the right effort, the right intervention towards the problem. And student support teams will analyze the progress monitoring data to track progress and to guide instruction. We're now beyond just the PLCs. We're bringing in the student support team, and we'll talk a little bit more about that ahead. Finally, tier three is individualized instruction for those students who have unique needs that cannot be adequately addressed in tiers one and two. It is special education ES. It's also ESL for those students who score as non-English speaking and require intensive pull-out services. Tier three is also kids who may go for some type of therapeutic intervention for chemical use or whatever. It represents a very intense level of intervention. It's designed to serve five to ten percent of our student population. Again, it's students who require that intensive intervention that cannot be accomplished in tiers one and two. And typically, students must meet some type of eligibility criteria in order to access tier-three services. That does not change under this model. Now, students are provided intensive intervention targeting individual goals. We're no longer going necessarily after the state standards, but these kids have very individualized goals. Progress is monitored very frequently. It's very easy to examine, for me to think about a child who's on a behavior management plan where they might be monitoring progress every fifteen minutes in terms of that child's behavior. And individual student teams analyze progress monitoring. So that child has a team based around their unique needs, and that's what occurs already. Now, in RTI, a problem is between, the difference between where you expect a child to be, where they should be, and where they're actually performing. And we try to identify every problem in terms of that. So let me give you a couple of examples. If the grade-level expectation is that a student reads ninety-five words per minute, and we know that that's what they need in order to pass the test, and student A is reading at forty words per minute, our problem is the fifty-five word-per-minute gap. We can measure it, we can track it, we know where our kid is at. Student B, if the average student in a classroom is on task eighty-five percent of the time and student B is only on task forty-five percent of the time, our problem is being off-task, that forty percent gap. If we can close that gap and have that student on task more, their achievement will go up. Interventions are systematic and explicit instruction. We are teaching something. We're teaching what it is that's necessary to close that gap. They're provided by all school staff based on training, not on their job title. They target specific measurable academic and behavioral goals. We want to close that forty percent off-task behavior gap. They're based on current valid baseline data. We want to know where the child is. We want to know where that child needs to go. We use scientific, research-based instruction and interventions whenever possible. There are proven techniques out there that people have done, they've verified, they know they work. We're going to use them whenever possible. Where there aren't those kinds of interventions, we're going to rely on best practices. And we're going to have ongoing progress monitoring to make sure that we are, in fact, closing that gap. And we're going to implement these interventions with treatment integrity. That means we're going to make sure we're doing them correctly, because if you don't do them correctly, you don't know if you had the wrong intervention or you had the right intervention, but it was just being done wrong. Interventions, there are three types of interventions. First is the standard protocol interventions, and we have two groups of people working on standard protocol interventions right now, one in the area of math and one in the area of reading. They are going out and doing a search of the literature about interventions that are known to work, that if we have a child who has a reading fluency deficit, here are interventions designed to increase reading fluency. If we have a child who has deficiency in understanding the phonics that are necessary in order to read, here are proven interventions to increase phonics skills. We're going to be gathering them together so that when a teacher encounters one of those kinds of problems, they're going to be able to go to a file, pick out a standard protocol intervention, and know that they've got something that they can implement that's targeted at the specific deficit that child has. We'll have intervent, excuse me, individual interventions that are targeted at a specific child. This may become into more, in fact, in terms of behavior kinds of things, for example. And then we have intensive interventions that are likely what are provided in tier three in special ed, ESL, and those other specialized programs. Now, PLCs and RTI. In PLCs, we have the four big questions, which we covered earlier. What knowledge or skills do we expect our students to learn? And in RTI, that's tier one. The second question, how will we know when students have learned the expected outcomes? Well, we have universal screening, formative and summative data that's analyzed by our PLC teams. We have the question, how will we respond when our students have already learned the expected outcomes? Through cluster grouping, flexible grouping, differential instruction, and advanced course offering, we're able to offer advanced skill development for those kids who've already achieved the standards and need even more. And then, of course, where RTI really comes in is how will we respond when our students have difficulty learning expected outcomes? We'll develop and implement interventions using the RTI problem-solving approach. So what is that problem-solving approach? It can be used for whole classrooms, small group, or individual learning and behavior problems. I've seen it applied to a whole building. There's no reason it couldn't be used in a whole district. It can be used with all ages, all grades, although it does differ as you get older because the problems differ. And I'm going to give you two examples. One is a small group intervention, and the second is an individual intervention. And again, we're going to focus on elementary at this point. Now, our PLC identifies a gap between students' performance and the grade-level expectation. So our problem for this is four students in Mrs. Smith's classroom are struggling learning division, and they're at risk of not reaching the grade-level standards. The grade-level expectation for curriculum-based measure is that students should be able to do eleven digits correct in a one-minute timing doing division, and these four students all score at four or less digits correct. So they are definitely not where they should be. Now, the first thing that we do is we develop hypotheses, and this is where it's different than what we currently do. We sit and brainstorm about what are the possible reasons that these four students are not learning division. And so I just came up with four examples, and quite frankly, if you get a group of teachers together, it will be more than four. But the four for this demonstration is that these kids don't know their multiplication facts. If you don't know multiplication, you can't do division because it's the reverse. They don't know how to subtract with regrouping. You have to be able to do that in order to do advanced division. By the way, that is the number-one problem why kids are unsuccessful with larger division problems. They don't understand the concept of breaking a hole into its part. That really comes about when you start teaching fractions. And the curriculum is being presented too rapidly for them to master. They need more time to just sit and practice each step so that they could have mastery. Now, through this process, what usually happens is the teacher who's working with these students usually goes, you know, that one sounds right to me. I think that might be what's going on. Now, at this point, we do something that's very, very different than we've ever done before. We're going to test out that hypothesis. We're not going to implement an intervention unless we have a high probability that it's going to be correct. So we're going to test that hypothesis. And to do that, we're going to use the acronym RIAT to talk about what we do. First, we're going to review. We have lots of data on kids. We might be able to go through and find out why it is these kids are having problems with division. We've got this test data, we've got strands, there's all sorts of things we can look at, work samples. We can look at their daily assignments and see what's going on. There's lots of existing data we can look at. We can interview. We can interview the teacher, the parent, the student. We might sometimes might get fruitful data there. We can observe. We can observe the child in the classroom, playground, wherever it is that our particular concern exists. And we can test. Now, test here could be anything from something very simple to very complicated. If we, if our hypothesis was that we had a child with a disability, the testing would be very different than in our scenario. And in fact, what they decide to do for this is to test, but they're not going to pull out a complicated test. Instead, they're going to pull out a one-page worksheet with a bunch of multiplication problems and ask the kids to complete it. And what they found is these kids couldn't complete the application worksheet. The hypothesis appears to be correct. They can't do their multiplication. So now, after testing the hypothesis, we're going to develop that intervention plan. And here, the students will work with a parent volunteer. It could be a college volunteer, it could be a paraprofessional, it could be a Title I. It doesn't matter. It matters that the person is trained and knows what to do. And they're going to work Monday through Thursday during the last twenty minutes of the school day to give that kid an extra scoop, or those four kids an extra scoop, and they're going to try to relearn multiplication using the X, Y, Z materials, which I obviously made up. Math probes will be administered. In other words, we're going to measure their progress each Friday afternoon to see if what we're doing works. Now, to make sure this is done properly, we want to implement that plan with treatment integrity. For this example, the teacher is going to train the volunteer using the X, Y, Z curriculum materials. She's going to model how to do that the first day so that person is observing how to implement it correctly. She will then observe the volunteer the next day to make sure that they're doing it correctly. And they're going to touch base every day after school, Monday through Thursday, just to answer questions and make sure things are going okay, because if it's not done correctly, again, we don't know if it's bad intervention or just an intervention that was done badly. Now, we implement the plan. The next thing we do is we're going to evaluate. Is it working? And so after four weeks of implementing this intervention with math probes, we find the following. Two students have mastered multiplication. We don't know why they were behind, and quite frankly, we may not care, but they've caught up. We discontinue this because they've mastered it. They're now back in the regular classroom working on division. One student is making steady gains, not quite there yet, so we're going to continue this for a little bit until he gets up to speed, or she. And then we got Jimmy. I wanted to use Egbert, but it didn't fit in the slide. And he's not making, he's just not working. So we're going to revisit problem-solving for Jimmy to see if we can't figure out what's happening for him. Now, the problem here is the gap between Jimmy's performance and grade-level expectations is not narrowing. The problem is he's struggling learning multiplication. We've gone a step down from division. He's falling further behind his peers. He's at risk of not reaching the grade-level math standards, and the first targeted intervention hasn't been successful. So what are we going to do? We're going to develop hypotheses. Well, we have the hypotheses from the first one, right? We'd now rule two of them out. Multiplication isn't working, and the curriculum isn't, I mean, it was presented in a small group of four kids at his pace, so it's really not about being presented too slowly. Two of those we've taken care of. So we've got two remaining, and we add a third or fourth or a fifth. And this time, the teacher goes, you know, he might not be able to deal with abstraction. Multiplication and division is abstraction. You've got to envision it in your mind because it's hard to see it like adding and just putting things together. Maybe he's a concrete learner. So we're going to test and see if that hypothesis makes sense. Again, we're going to do the RIAT, the same as before, but this time, we're going to interview. Who are we going to interview? Last year's teacher. What worked? And what she found out is not even concrete, she's a very visual learner, and she had to use a hands-on material and the smart board to teach him how to subtract. Our problem is this year's teacher doesn't have a smart board. So what's the plan we're going to come up with? Well, Jimmy's going to work with Mrs. Smith, the teacher, now the last twenty minutes of each school day to practice multiplication and division using manipulatives and an iPad application borrowed from the resource room. I'm taking some of Matt's thunder about that. Math probes will be administered Friday afternoon to monitor progress. I want you to notice something. We're taking something from the special ed room, and we're now going to be using it in RTI. The walls between special ed and regular ed are going to start getting blurry, and that's not a bad thing. So we have the plan. How are we going to implement it? An ed assistant will watch Mrs. Smith's class while she works with Jimmy the last twenty minutes of each day. The resource room teacher shows Mrs. Smith how to use the manipulatives in combination with that iPad app. Again, that's something that probably doesn't exist right now. Observes the first day of instruction and checks back periodically to answer questions and ensure treatment integrity. Of course, we're going to measure now the success of that, so we administer our weekly math probes. At the end of week one, we're not seeing much. Of course, it's just the first week. I mean, so we're going to continue the intervention. Week three, Jimmy masters basic multiplication. We're going to continue the intervention. By week four, he begins to master simple division. Jimmy's bright. Once he figures out multiplication, it's just the reverse, so division comes in rather quickly. Now, by week six, he masters division with regrouping, and we discontinue this intervention. But what have we learned about Jimmy? He needs hands-on manipulatives, and for him to continue to be successful in mathematics, he's going to need to continue to have access and instruction using those. So what does that mean? Well, if Jimmy's needs for hands-on manipulatives and visuals is so great that it can't be accomplished in that regular classroom with the other twenty-six kids... accomplished in that regular classroom with the other twenty-six kids, or if the process identifies an intervention that can't be implemented in tier one. For example, if this child needs significantly more time than everybody else in order to grasp a concept, to practice it before it sinks in, such that it would slow down the entire rest of the class, or if after implementing several targeted interventions, the problem persists, Jimmy moves to tier two. Smaller group, more time where they can do these kinds of things. Without tier two, Jimmy would not qualify for special ed. He would remain in tier one, and he'd continue to fall further and further behind. Although the problem-solving approach works equally well for grades K through twelve, and by the way, we will implement this pre-K. The types of problems they're carrying with age as children get older, it's kind of the "duh" statement. The type of interventions available between elementary and secondary differ greatly. Kids in first grade will work for a sticker. It's not going to work in high school. Tier two will look very different between elementary and secondary. At secondary, tier two may be a remedial class because there's type to sections, whereas in grade school, they can shuffle kids back and forth more easily across grade levels. And universal screening will likely only occur in grades K through six, because when you get beyond that, you've got all this other test data, and you still have formative assessments that the teachers are using. Now, that's not to say we're not going to progress monitor. We're just not going to do that beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year assessment for everybody. So as we go ahead and implement this, the most difficult pieces to put in place to implement RTI, we already have. The hard work, the hard lifting, has already occurred. We have the core curriculum, and it's there, it's solid. We have PLCs. They're looking at student data. We have time set aside each week to look at data and problem-solve. We have viewpoint to quickly access data, that we can analyze it, it's at our fingertips. We have curriculum-based assessments to screen and track progress. We have been playing with those things. I have to tell you, I and several other special educators were at a training just last week, and it was using database decision-making to guide special education decisions that you make. And I have to tell you, we sat there going, we're already doing that. Yeah, we've got that in place. And we started talking about the things that we were doing, and quite frankly, I was kind of surprised. Other people just looked at it as an amazement, and we've experienced that, too, when we talk about we actually have time built into our schedule to problem-solve. So what are the next steps? Well, we have to do staff development. The first thing we need to do is we have to give an overview for all of our elementary staff if we're going to be implementing this. They've got to know the basics, and what that's going to be is something that's largely similar to what you've seen tonight, although obviously, this was aimed at the board, and the other one will be aimed more at teachers. We need to provide training for all of our professional staff on the problem-solving approach. It's not difficult. It's not rocket science, but it's unlearning what we've been doing and being systematic about how it is we go about addressing problems. We need to provide an overview for secondary staff about what will be coming in the future. We need to provide support for teachers and teams as they implement this. If we don't provide support, it will fall flat on its face. If we implement this and provide teachers half-hearted